For May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. All three selectmen are present, town administrator present. Fred Mullin is reporting for the benefit of the public that aren't here. And Lyndon Nickerson will upload that to the town website. Okay, that being said, guys, I have some old business of some meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes, regular minutes of May fifteenth, twenty twenty five as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion to amend, second and in discussion?
They all, they look straight.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, anybody that's not on the agenda, if they have anything to bring up. There you go. Okay, seeing no one, public comment, we'll have another one at the end of the meeting. So don't get worried, you won't be able to speak. Alright, under town business, we've got the land surveyor Bob Kilmer. Um, here from Sanford Surveying to represent Alan and Phyllis Byrd. The lot C four oh two oh three with an address of thirty nine Old Millbrook Road. Requesting to build on proposed new five acre lot to be created on lot number C four oh two oh three. Okay, the floor's yours, why don't you describe what you guys are looking to do and we'll go from there. We have had a package from Donna to read some of the innuendos that go along with the lot.
You all, you all have?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay. Alright, again, I'm Bob Kilmer from Sanford Survey. So we're just trying to get, figure out what our steps are and what the possibilities are to, to create this new five acre lot. Again, it's on Mel. Old, Old Millbrook Road, there we go. And um, getting, getting some conflicting stuff, uh, looks like it's a private road. Looks like it's been discontinued and whatever else. And we're just trying to figure out what the steps are. So we're not, you know, jumping the gun, going to the wrong board, wherever else like that.
Yeah.
And.
And as you know, we, we've been finding out some stuff as we go, every week we find a little bit more of. So I spoke with Donna this week to get a, a quick overview of everything that we think we have to this point. Uh, so we have an original layout of the road back in the day. And then we have a discontinuance of the road. Meaning that the butters on the road, however many they are, owned to the equal center of the road.
The center, yeah.
And there's also, I guess, a previous agreement between the two.
Correct.
Uh, owners of that road that had an agreement, some sort of no further development on the lot.
Correct.
In the past, which doesn't typically affect town stuff, that's more of a, uh, something between the landowners and some agreement.
Between butters, whatever else, whatever's on the road.
Being where the road was discontinued and looking at the only avenues we have as selectmen to have somebody develop, it's not a class six road, so we can't have you just bring it up to a class five road. So being where it's private road now, um, the road would have to be relayed out again by the select board. And typically, there's gotta be a hardship where it benefits the town to lay out a road because a layout, a layout of a road is kind of an old statutory recommendation. They kind of stopped laying out, uh, roads and have gone to subdivisions where the subdivision approval process is part of creating a road.
Correct.
But being where this one has been discontinued, it puts us right back to square one. So I guess parts of the road also had been built on even though the road had been discontinued. And I don't know exactly what parts those were. It said to such and such houses, there was a building allowed to go on, on that road. Um, I'm not sure if you know, but as select board, any class six road or less, the select board has no authority to spend money on those roads, it's gonna be class five or better. Uh, we had a road we were maintaining for years just down the hill here, Giddy Road. And we maintained it to the first house for eighteen years. Just last year, we discontinued maintaining that road. Because you cannot spend town money to maintain a road that's not class five or better. We had to notify the owner and, and whatnot, even though it had happened for many years in the past. So, uh, we wanna obviously help you in any way we can. But I guess you guys are gonna have to come to the board with what you recommend from us, looking at all the statutes and RSAs and whatnot. And the other thing, I would think that you guys would have some sort of new agreement with the landowner that owns the other house.
Correct, and they, they, again, nothing in writing, they, they, you know, agreed verbally and we're just, you know, that's a process that, that, that agreement, again, recorded, that would have to be revised.
And you know, I think if the lot was already subdivided, was a grandfathered lot or something.
Absolutely.
Whether it's conforming or non-conforming, it would probably help your, your case, but because you're creating a lot.
Correct.
It's a whole different set of circumstances.
Starting from a deep hole instead of.
Yeah. So I don't know if I helped you any, but I do know that, um, layouts of road have come before the select board, uh, fa- before. And if you look at, um, the options under the RSAs or hard road to travel.
Yep.
On the select board, laying out a road in a current status because there's a hardship. You have to go through the process of approving the hardship and whether it's a benefit to the town to doing that or not. And that kind of gets approved by the surveyor that's hired for the, for the landowners.
Yeah.
So I, I think that that's the only option that I could see going through with Donna. Because it's been discontinued. Um, and you can't just go to the legislative body, meaning the voters, and open a road back up. So the layout process is kind of, when they originally laid out all these roads going to all these old farms that were within a town, they did that through those period of years. And back in the early, I wanna say late forties, I guess they kind of stopped that process. And after like, I wanna say nineteen sixty eight, it was no longer used. Unless it's a real special reason or a benefit to the town, so. I would like you guys to read through that probably and see if that's the way we go about it or, you know, come to us with another option that we're not thinking about, but I don't know of any that we are.
Dave, just to think out of the box here, it, it is a new subdivision. Um, and if it's, let's assume there's no road there, we're making the assumption there's no road at all right there. If it's a new subdivision, it could fall into purview of the planning board, he could put the road in, have it join the existing road. But it would be a completely a new road development to support that new road.
But it couldn't go over her land.
Well, that, that, that's.
So they'd have to go onto their land, create a road that turns and goes to a new lot. And a full, full size road, so.
This is, like, I just, you know, nothing, you haven't dealt with anything like this before with any other road, not.
And we've had a lot of situations come in front of us. I've been a selectman almost ten years and Mike has. I own land that's in a similar situation like that, where I actually had to use, um, six seventy four point four one and went to the zoning board to build on the lots I have, but they were all grandfathered lots already. So I don't have your option where it was discontinued. So. Um, I think just read through those rules, see which ones apply best to you guys and then, um, approach the board.
Again, I guess the question would be, process would, without starting the survey, doing the engineering for the whole ass up. Would we go to the zoning board to create a, you know, to create a lot that's not only five acre, it go a little that way?
That is part of that six seventy four point four one, but because the road's discontinued, I don't think they're gonna, I don't think they're gonna, um, enjoy that option.
Because there's no road frontage.
Zoning doesn't create a lot.
No, but if you. If you go to zoning, under six seventy four point four one, if you go to build on a lot that's pre-existing without road frontage, zoning has the ability to do that.
Correct.
They have an existing lot that already has a home.
Has a house on it.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
But what they're trying to do is create a five acre lot on that existing lot, so that wouldn't be a zoning.
No, uh, that's what I'm trying to explain to them.
Okay.
Okay? So I'm saying, I don't think that they would.
They wouldn't even, uh.
Consider it because the road's discontinued.
Okay.
If the road wasn't discontinued, you had another option, then it would probably, you know, if it was a class six road, you could go to him or something to that effect. If it was a class six road, we could actually give you a waiver if you're gonna upgrade that portion of road to, to class five. And we have had three of those, I think, come in the last year and a half. And we've made them, you know, put it in class five dirt standards is what we, we do and.
Not bringing, okay.
Yep.
But again, the class six, not discontinued, yeah?
Yeah, so the discontinuance where you have a real hardship because she owns the center of the road and they own the center of the road, at least in that portion of road.
Right, and then.
And you know, somebody else owns beyond you, they have the ability to go over that as well to reach their land.
Yeah.
So. Um, it gets a, gets a little confusing there, but. That's, I think, where you wanna start and I, the only thing I can think of is go through the hardships real thoroughly because there's gotta be a benefit to the town in doing so, I think.
Okay.
Would you advise him to contact all those butters that are along that private road?
Um, I think through part of his process, they're gonna have to be notified if he came in for a lay.
Right, but if they, if he met with them before he started the survey and said, hey, listen, I wanna upgrade from here to here, it's gonna benefit you.
Now, Old Millbrook, um, takes a left and then it's part of the other road.
Powell Lane.
Powell Lane.
Yeah.
So.
I just, there's so, there's so much information there, I couldn't determine what that section was that was discontinued. Where there's so many houses on Old Millbrook, it's just, uh, a land surveyor's responsibility to try to uncover those.
There's, there's one other thing that I don't think has been clarified is they did allow some building there, obviously. And they did that after the road was discontinued. What part of that road they allowed it to happen on or not? I don't even know if it matters to us, because they let it happen at one time, probably isn't something we're gonna continue doing, you know what I mean?
Okay.
But I think that the, uh, I think the only avenue I can think of possibly after reading through all those hard road to travel, and I spent a lot of time in there, was to do a layout of the road. But there becomes hardship steps that you have to go through for that. So before you spent a lot of money, I'd probably go that avenue.
Try to work that out first and.
Yeah, cuz we could, if you did that request for the layout, then we could possibly send it to our town attorney and see what his thoughts were as far as us either approving it or denying it, get some background feedback from him.
Okay.
Do you guys see anything I missed? The other two selector?
No. It's a challenge with some of the records, it's just not as clear as it could be.
It's a challenging lot. And just because the road's discontinued pretty much. Uh, once, once a town discontinues a road, which I wanna say there's probably been five roads that have come for discontinuance. Um, since I've been coming up to town meetings and none of those have passed because for situations like this, people don't want them to pass because it's, in the future, you're, you're really stuck. So, but they have the right to access that lot off the road, just not build on it until that's squared away, I think.
Alright, so. Town attorney would be the person that, if we did the relook, you know.
Yeah, if you do that and submit it to us, then we can at least have him look at, uh, your submittal and get his recommendation for the town from it.
Alright.
That's the only, I, I couldn't think of any other avenue, looking at it, talking with Donna. Obviously, we're here to help however we can. And there's nothing that we're against doing, it's just the rules only allow.
What the process is and if it can be.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And obviously, there are no more lots really on main roads around, so we're gonna have a lot of this coming up in the future. I can think of another one right up here on the top of the hill, we have a, the sole property there, that's another discontinued section of road after a certain point. They both have the right to pass and repass, but eventually their children may wanna build on that road further down, same situation.
Alright.
Thank you for coming in and I, I know it probably wasn't much help, but.
It started quite, and to know, you know, where, it's like I said, I was looking for whatever is, you know, if this had been, happened before, being discontinued, whatever, somebody come from, you know.
Nothing being discontinued, but like I said, if it wasn't, you'd have the zoning option to go through.
Yeah.
Or you'd have the planning option to go through, or us saying, make it a class five dirt road. And here are our standards, and we'd be willing to do that, but.
I mean, we, we have other roads which are class, uh, six roads, and the thing is, uh, the only thing you have to do to bring it, to build, is bring the section up to.
Bring it up, correct.
And we're not making people pave the dirt road, you're sticking with a dirt road, just class five dirt standards.
And again, as, if it was class six, you could just review it. Now, who would review that? Would be town.
We have a town engineer.
Or town engineer would review it and whatever else, give recommendations for what, what it required.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, and we kind of developed a standard because we had so many coming to us, so we have a, a pretty good sheet on that. So we do have that available, I'm not sure if Donna gave you a copy of that. Class five.
I don't think we've gotten that far, I was just trying to, you know.
It's nothing out of the normal, it's a standard width, so much gravel, so much top coat of crush and, uh, it's pretty standard.
Okay.
And some shoulders.
Alright.
I hope that helps you guys.
Thank you very much.
I'll ask Donna to send you the standards, the bigger stuff on.
Perfect. Anybody got any questions for them, with your hair?
I think, uh, my only question is, um, so my parents' driveway is like eight hundred eighty feet long. It's, it's in really good shape, whatever, it is private. You guys, have you ever approved a lot on a private road?
Um, we have a road down here at the end of Mansion Road, that they developed houses out at the end of it.
Yeah.
And it was a private road, and again, they made them at the time, build it to town class five standards.
Right.
And they've since, I think, paved that road, but, um, so we do have, whether it's a class six brought up to class five standards or a private road brought to class five standards, it has been allowed. The problem with that lot is it's been, it's discontinuous.
This, you know, we deal with all the butters.
And so, you know, going through that process, you could, um, talk about building a road on your half of the road that you own as well, too. So.
It just, yeah, you'd have to get to a point and then push it over.
But you gotta remember, uh, the people beyond you have a right to pass and repass over that section.
Over that section, yeah.
So I, I haven't looked at the lot that well to see if you could build the road even entirely on your property.
Uh, the stone walls and stuff, that, that, that wouldn't even be an option, and both sides are beautiful walls all the way up to the.
But if you cross the wall and then follow the inside of the lot on the opposite side of the wall, could you?
You just, uh, kind of roughly where he's trying to put that, that, just to get the three hundred feet, it's, once you break over that wall, yeah, there is that portion, but that portion you'd be using for your private road is the better building parcel. Yeah.
Okay. That might be something that you describe in the hardship. Typically hardships, uh, you probably know this, they aren't related to money.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, guys, if there's anything we can do to help, certainly come back in and ask us, or if you have an informal question you want, uh, Lee to send out to us. We try and answer them all at this meeting when we're together.
Okay.
Um, but if you wanna get a sense out and say, hey, what do you, what about this thought?
Have a bunch of questions or whatever, you can give it to where.
Cause we're all, we're all willing to help you here, just to, the certain rules and regulations tie our hands to what we can and can't do.
Okay.
Alright?
Alright.
Thank you, thanks for seeing me again.
Thank you, sir, nice to see you guys. Okay. Sue, thanks for coming.
Oh gosh, yes.
Yeah. We'll, uh, see what all plays out, thanks again.
Okay, thanks, guys.
See you later.
Okay. I'm gonna go into mailbox items next on the agenda.
Thank you.
Hi, boss.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm all right.
Good, good, keep going.
Keep doing okay.
Thanks, Sue.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Going past these things, I'm gonna go into. Mailbox items before I go into a, uh, public comment and try and see if there's any more public comment here. We have a letter here showing some deficiencies on the elevator. Warning violation, not taking the thirty days, no essential time to be granted. President received the inspector's report on the aforementioned elevator accessible.
This is the Tower of Wall elevator.
Yeah. School Street, annual certificate of inspection and a safety test. Now, we were supposed to be on a yearly thing there.
Oh, we are.
Um, so what, they come out and look at it before they, shouldn't we be having it done before these guys come up from the state?
Oh, no, the state is the only one that's available that does inspections. There's very few companies out there that will do the official inspection.
Okay, so we're, we're here.
Page two is at the bottom, little green flag, flip the next page.
Oh, emergency phone partially operative, video phone, I heart video, voices intermittent, oil level low in tank.
Which oil tank?
It's the, the hydraulic oil tank.
Okay, needed for.
Yeah.
It's kinda new.
He's, right, he said that it could have been a situation where, when they're moving it and installing it, they always have a little less than the required full tanks. And then after they use it, then they fill it up and.
So it just means these things.
Could be maintenance. Um, the other item, he said that had the.
So that's the company we had the trouble of setting up that video phone originally, remember that, took a long time? And what it is, is we have a company where somebody gets stuck in the elevator, there's new technology. You used to just have a phone pickup and there was a high line and people called out, said there was an emergency. Now, that thing has a video on it. Where they can speak, see a person, calm the people down in the elevator. And that video was brand new the year, we put the requirement to have that was brand new the year we put that elevator in. It took us forever to get a company. They said they were able to do it, yet they weren't able to do it and they, they were getting on board with it as we were doing it. We finally, after a bunch of push and shove, got that set, but then that company overhooks that.
No, they, we went away from them because they couldn't provide us this.
And who did we go to?
I have to look it up.
Okay.
It's a different company, cuz that Pro Technologies is our security company and I own.
Fly this in thirty days, when was this done?
Well, we just received it.
Twenty second. So we only have till June twenty second to get this rectified.
I think the, the date, yeah. It's thirty days, probably.
Right.
I'll look at the, um, the company that did the installation, it's, Pro Technology was not.
They were the ones, we tried for six months and couldn't do it and we went to a different company.
Correct.
They did it right away. And that was through the elevator guys telling us, go to this company because Pro Technologies won't do it or won't be able to.
They may be up to speed now, I don't know, but I don't know the company.
Let's call the original company, cuz it's all set up through them.
Yeah, it's a hardware.
Tell them the video is not working. And the other thing, the, um, oil level, let's call the original elevator company, they're out of concrete, we'll get them to check that oil level for us. I'm thinking they might have been airing.
And that was founded an inspection at oil level?
Yeah.
The state inspected them. So I was thinking it was a, um, I was thinking the oil level might have air, you know, and then air comes out after use.
So hearing that maybe the difficulties in finding a vendor that can fix this, what's the impact if it can't be fixed in the thirty days?
It'll be closed.
We have to shut the, um.
Shut the building or shut the elevator?
Upstairs.
No, the upstairs.
No use of the upstairs and turn, shut the, uh, elevator off.
Yeah.
Okay.
There'll be no use of the upstairs, if there's a handyman person available, you're gonna have it open for them, so.
Okay.
We gotta react to this quickly, if you need my help, look in, okay?
There's no, uh, there's no waivers or extensions that you know of?
So it says in that report, no.
It says no?
No waivers.
Oh.
And you guys want to take it quickly, why do you have a?
So he only, he said he did not fail the inspection because the, on the second try of the telephone call with the con, uh, elevator company, she picked up on the second call.
It's, uh, it was very common for them not to pick up right away and get that set up, even with the new company. It was like everybody, everybody was getting used to it. Like the owner of the company knew how to do it, all of his workers didn't know. And so the girls were picking up, but they weren't turning on the picture, it was a.
He wants to initial that.
It was messy.
So this is a priority, I mean, if we wanna continue these upstairs.
Yeah.
I would say so, yeah. Okay, there's, um, photo of a damage on the ceiling here of the library edition it shows. And it looks like it's right at the angle of the roof.
No, it's the stairs, the second landing that.
Yeah, I'm looking at the angle of the roof up by the stairs there.
Yeah, so it says.
But there's gotta be moisture in there for that to be happening.
You think that's what that is, it's not from stepping on it and shaking and just causing the slits?
No, the ceiling, you're not stepping on the ceiling.
Yeah, but if you have motion on the stairs, it's the free floating stairs. And it's the second landing going up. That's the little edge, and you can see the door in the back.
Oh, this is the first floor on the picture, okay.
So this could be a vibration or a.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, that's just a tape joint.
We can get Greg Miller to look at it and fix it, fix it, or do we, I mean, is, is it still in the warranty?
Does Greg do the?
He does.
One year warranty, I think we're fast.
He does, uh, sheet rock and painting, he took care of the leak in the basement with his.
Yeah, remind him to paint for that upstairs and that, or do him on the shelves.
Little settling, you might say, right?
Well, I'm glad it's that, I was thinking it's up by that flat roof. Okay. The next thing we have is a notice from Health Trust, um, for SB two ninety seven that would strengthen the risk of the pool's benefits for New Hampshire Public Sector. Did you guys read that email we sent out to us?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, any of you guys reaching out to the?
I, 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 I got the feeling it was on his glide path passing.
I know, but it did say on page two that we hope that you can.
Reach out?
Reach out to the, uh, health representatives and whatnot.
Do you have the, do you have the updated list of?
I just did it.
Could, could we at least, uh, maybe?
I'll send it out to you.
Well, send it to our rep in Dunbar, I mean, uh, with the one, uh, plant?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right, would be.
Let's get him to do it.
Well, let, let, let him notify it how we want him to vote, we'd like him to vote.
Well, it was, I just did something for the, I had to send a notice.
But we should have a standard way of sending our combined recommendation to basically all of them.
Yeah.
We should be able to just do that.
Dan, do you wanna head set that up?
Sure.
We'll get our state reps when we can send it out to them.
Yeah.
If it's our boards.
It should be, it, yeah, we could probably just set up a template that would allow us to just do that automatically.
Especially when things come up, uh.
Yeah, cuz we're gonna, we're probably dealing with these regularly.
Yeah, and we did one not long ago and I had to reach out to each one of them and send out a letter.
Okay.
I think you signed them one night.
Yeah.
I'll make a note of that.
So I'll send, I'll show you.
We'll let him do a template and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then it'll be generic and probably you'll send them electronically.
Yes, yeah.
Set up, too. Okay. Uh, we got a question here from the auditor that needs to be, uh, filled out here.
Typically, that's you.
I'm sorry, I jumped, I jumped.
Oh, you missed D.
I missed D. Uh, sealed bid recommendation from the fire department to sell the substandard equipment in the fire department.
I saw some of it was a boat, inflatable boat.
Flatable boat?
It's kind of a package.
Yeah, a trailer with it.
A little motor and a trailer.
Trailer. And he thinks he can receive more with a silent auction, I have no problem with that. It gives the age of the boat, nineteen ninety nine, a long inflatable boat. Motors a small Mercury, fifteen horsepower. And a small nineteen eighty six.
It's on, it's on here.
Trailer.
It's on our inbox.
Yeah. Is this gonna go on our town website for the business?
There it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I saw it, I'm sorry, it wasn't emailed, it was on town website, that's right.
You wanna initial this?
Yeah.
Um, I'll over this questionnaire, I've done them in the past.
And that's last year's questionnaire, so if you want to.
What, what, uh, what's the audit around?
Here's my rating. Okay, I'll take care of that.
You wanna show, oh, Dana's interested in the kind of questions they ask.
Yeah. An audit about what?
Our financial audit.
Oh, it's financial audit, okay, alright.
The ones that were just here a week or so ago.
Last week.
Okay.
That's all I have on these two agendas here. And simply, I'll do this all back to Dana. I'll keep this, uh, packet for zoning for now. And, um, I'll fill this out. Now, I'm gonna bring it back, um, to our regular board meeting now that I've got rid of the mailbox items. And you're here to see us tonight?
Yes, I am.
Can you come right up front here and let us know? These two fellows here, my fellow selectmen, haven't met you yet, so introduce yourself. This is our.
Don Martin.
Oh, Don.
I worked at the, um, the Dunbar for your folks. And I don't mind, it's, 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 it's a good job, it's an easy job. But, uh, some of the things that, uh, he asked people to do, not only just myself, but as a new person, the other folks that I've worked with, the other two guys, Gary. He asked people to do, not only just myself, but as a new person, the other folks that I've worked with, the other two guys, Gary and uh.
Greg?
Greg, Greg, yeah.
Gary and Brendan?
Brendan and Greg, I'm sorry, um, the first, the first day, he I went, was walking out with one of the guys to. Dump some glass into the dumpster. So he told me I had to open up the gate so he could get the uh skid steer in there and dump the glass, so then when he brought it out.
So are you mean uh Woody?
Woody was dr- yeah, I'm sorry, Woody was.
Okay, I thought you were talking about Brendan.
No, 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 well Brendan was was doing uh, he he dumped the glass, came back out. And then told, Brendan had uh a broom or something to sweep up the inside, you know, of anything that didn't fall. Problem being, he was standing on the edge of the dumpster, it was raining, so if he had lost his footing for any reason. He he he'd probably, we'd probably be putting him in the, in his, you know, laying it to rest, that's to me is ridiculous and I. So the following morning, I ta- I talked with Woody and I told him, I said. I'm not comfortable with doing some of the things that I see you guys doing around here, and I know you want me to train out there. But I'm just not comfortable doing it, only because, you know, uh, I'm getting older. And my footing's not that great sometimes, but I said, standing on that dumpster like that, that's totally uh unbelievable. Uh and. The young kid Brendan. One day was making bail. No safety glasses on his face, no gloves on his hands, and and I looked at him and said, really? Oh, I do this all the time, and everybody walks in there and works in there with me. And most of the time they they don't have any safety glasses on, I have to wear these because they're obviously for my eyes, but uh. It's it's just not very well protected, they don't protect each other, and I asked, you know, I told him, I said. A lot of heavy lifting is not in my uh DNA right now, cause I'm losing my, the strength of my hands, you know, it's all from aging. But I, and like I said, I don't, my being there working with the guys, it's. And I told him, I said, it's not a case of I need the money, I just need to get out of the dumpster, cause we're both retired and uh I need to keep busy, so.
What was the response when you brought up the safety concerns?
Well, they both told me, all three of us.
These are the workers?
We won't, yeah, we won't ask you to do anything you're not comfortable with, and I said, okay. So he asked me to, the the Thursday, he asked me to take some stuff down to the. Metal down to the sheds that the trails that he has there and stuff, uh pretty heavy, you know, from from trucks and whatnot. And and I just, I don't know. Maybe it's me, maybe it's not me, but it's too unsafe to work there. I I just don't. I I don't, I don't.
What day did you go in, this Saturday was your first day or?
Oh, no, no, I worked uh. Wednesday, Thursday and Saturday last week.
Okay, so this is your first day is Wednesday?
Yeah.
Thursday is Saturday?
Yeah.
And uh, yeah, I don't think standing on the dumpster is a very smart thing to do either, I would make sure to talk about that. And uh what was the other thing you told us about safety glasses?
Safety glasses and and glass.
And also, this is my opinion, and I, it's not necessarily gonna be your opinion, but. I don't think a skid steer is the right piece of equipment to be using inside that building. Because last Thursday we were loading a truck, or Woody was loading a truck. And you can't, he can't see anything other than straight ahead. Cause there's no mirrors on there at all, and we, all three of us were second guessing his moves. So we we had to weigh up a couple bales of paper, I mean um corrugated. So he drops it on the scale, backs out, lifts the forks up, and I was gonna start going this way, walking across in front of him. And I didn't realize he didn't see me at first, so I stayed there and then Joey drove the forks over the scale to look at the weight. And I'm saying, why are you doing that? Well, I need to know what the weight is, well, it's right there, when we're writing it down, that's what he's trying to show me how to do. So, you know, that could become an accident. I'm not trying to pick on anybody, I'm just trying to keep everybody safe, including myself.
Alright. Uh, anything else that you noticed while you're down there, cause?
No.
Um, now you were scheduled but didn't show up.
That's correct.
And you didn't call into him to tell him you weren't showing up, right?
No, I didn't.
What days were those?
Yesterday and today.
Okay, so that uh yesterday was uh Thursday.
Wednesday, today's Thursday.
Today, yeah, yesterday was my.
Did you not wanna call in because you felt that there was conflict there or?
Well, I th- I felt that after. He's. I felt there would be conflict if I called in and talked to him, tell and told him the reason why I wasn't coming in. But I think he 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 must have a, he must have that, he must know or realize that I didn't give him for that, I don't, I don't know, like I. Like I said, I'm not trying to make ways, I'm just trying to keep myself safe and them safe too.
No, he he texted me, cause I, as you know, I'm the, I'm the selectmen's representative for the transfer station. And he stated that Don was a no show and didn't call, and then I said, okay, well, let's reach out to him, give him a call, see what's going on, see if he's all right. And I asked him, I said, can you send me his number, your number, and he said that he didn't have the file back from the girls, but. The girls at the office would, so when I came in tonight, I was asking Lynn for your number to call you, and that's when she said you would come in and reached out and wanted to come in to see us, so. Um, I'm glad you did come in because these concerns, whether you work down there or not, are concerns I wanna go over with him because. Um, for instance, for thirty years down there, there was no fencing by the dumpsters, everybody in the public, all their kids. Could throw into those big dumpsters, when I became selectmen and Mike were like. This is a no, we have to protect the public down there, that's what we just put fences up there a couple of years back. And had them professionally installed, professional roller gates, and everybody's like, well, that's gonna be a lot of money, but. The liability the town was in for all those years without it was incredible to me that nobody put those there because. It's actually, there was like a one foot concrete there, so it's almost a trip hazard as you're reaching over the concrete, but.
So I'll give you one, one other thing probably to add, I was just there yesterday and um I had glass to just throw in the dumpster and. I didn't throw it at the recycle center, sometimes if I'm just there, I just throw it.
You got a bigger one, yeah.
And I don't know who the guy is, but he's super friendly um there, I don't know, maybe.
Friend of. He works here most of the time.
Yeah, is it, okay.
The man here?
And, not the quiet guy, very talk, very talkative.
That's Greg, that's Greg, yeah.
Okay, is it Greg?
Yeah, a real great presence.
Yeah, very talkative, very, very pleasant, everything else, and as I'm dumping it in, he said, let me, oh, oh, let me pull the screen, the fence back for you. So, and I said, you don't need to do that, and it actually, it was kinda odd that he would do that, cause it's not like I can't.
Oh, they do do that all the time too.
They do?
Yeah, they open up for like you pack a truck up there and dump it.
Yeah, but I'm just dumping a pail.
Yeah.
And, but I, but I actually thought like, well, that's actually not safe now, because now we opened the gate, I could fall in. Not that I was worried about falling in, but I'm like, just leave the thing there, I can.
Yeah, they do do that all the time, only so that they can reach over that, cause you got the concrete and the dumpster.
Yeah.
And then the space, and I think if they don't do that, perhaps the people dump a lot of stuff down next to the dumpster.
Oh, maybe that, okay, so maybe people do that.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
It's kind of a catch twenty two.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just, I actually didn't even think of it until you just brought up the little dumpster thing.
Yeah.
But normally, um, I don't have anybody there pulling that gate back for me, I'm just tossing the stuff over the, over the, over the black fence.
Same with you. Yeah, I know that, I've heard, I have complained before about all the stuff that goes down.
Okay.
On the edge there, so. And you can only park them so close, I think, you know.
Those fires trucks and that, yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, I'm glad you brought these, but it sounds like to me that um. You think even some of the work is too heavy for you to do down there.
Oh, I know it is, I know it is.
Yeah, it is a pretty strenuous job, I think that's.
I mean, if I was uh mailing stuff, that's, that's nothing.
Yeah.
So.
Um, but I I know that it's it's a, it's very physical down there.
If if these things were addressed in some way, would you wanna continue working there?
Well, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Something, I mean, something has to happen.
So you wouldn't rule that out?
Um, Greg asked him the other time, Tuesday. He asked him, does he um, Woody had said, oh, it's gonna be a real busy day tomorrow and blah blah, we get that. So Greg said, well, let me come in that one early, he said, he said, I can't do that, not enough gets done as it is. And I found that statement to be a little bit ridiculous, but it is what it is, I know he's trying to save money, but.
He's trying to stay within a budget, I think also, cause he only has so much budget time. Okay, I think uh, I think we'll address them, how do you wanna handle this, you want me to try and call you back after we address them or?
Yeah, you, you have my number, right?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, yeah, give me, when, yeah, once it's addressed, not a problem.
Oh, you wanna uh plan work schedule right now, for like what would be your next day at work?
It would be Saturday, but uh, I'll I'll go back Thursday, once everything is done.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
Um, he's off tomorrow too, right?
Yeah, tomorrow's.
Tomorrow's Friday, doesn't it?
Friday.
So I won't be talking to him till I get out of the week, cause he's off and I'm gonna be north on Saturday, so.
Okay, alright, thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Uh, safety glasses are on glass breaking, that's important, gloves, we've been, we've been uh buying gloves forever, but they're not using them by the glass, we've bought them. Come back with the same thing, if you have to have them on, and gloves.
So Brendan heard, thought about the skid steer thing, but I think he's right, you can only see in front of you, is there another type of equipment that we would, could use?
You could uh do a large forklift. Probably those, I do know that those things weigh a substantial amount of weight, and that's the reason he likes to use the skid steer, not just that, because the skid steer. Will turn almost in its, in its own tracks, will turn around, where a forklift, you've gotta turn more, I do know they have tight radius ones on those as well, but. The 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 skid steer works as well as doing that, as well as doing our plowing, as well as doing a bunch of stuff there when they're packing, so. It's more universal with just having a forklift there, and I do know that the size of those bundles and the weight of them. Um, it would have to be a substantially sized forklift.
Well, there could just be rules similar to like a Home Depot where, you know, they'll block an area off, don't have somebody else.
Yeah.
Around when you're inside the building or something, you know?
Oh, they do do that, they put the rope up and you can't even go down the aisle.
Yeah, you can't even go down that aisle.
Yeah. Let me up on a note of that to see if we could uh.
So I don't, get my chores done sometimes.
Go through some sort of procedure of putting it on.
Yeah, but he's, right now, I think he's the only one that uses a skid steer, right, nobody has the strength yet.
Yeah, the other guys uh didn't have enough know how to to run that, yeah.
Maybe if you explain to him to call out his commands rather than.
He came with a machine running thing, those cabs are enclosed, it's even hard to see, like he's saying with the arms that are there, how a skid steer is made to function. You're sitting in like a little rabbit hole, controlling it, the arms go on the outside of you and the cages, the visibility is very questionable.
He didn't see me as I was right next to him yesterday.
Yeah, you typically.
Cause it, cause of those bars that come down.
And the noise and the, a lot of people don't, you have to watch out for the equipment, which is.
When the thing is blocking the area out, and there's there's no, no pedestrian traffic allowed around it, the guys aboard it. Yes.
But you know, like, those guys, I think part of their job is to um move some stuff or get this ready or that ready while Woody's there. So just have one guy like Greg working with you, that can react and you can watch that one guy.
Sure. Yeah.
And he knows enough to watch out for it, so, skid steer, it's worth a conversation anyway.
I thought that um Primex offered skid steer training at one point that they may have already done at one time, but now that we have.
You gotta have somebody that can operate equipment, they'll put in there, you know?
Correct, but it would, the training can also be people observing and assisting, see what I'm saying?
Remember the workers we have down there.
Like a flagger, do this, or when the car comes, don't do this type of thing.
Yeah, I don't know if it was about that or not, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll definitely bring these issues up to him, but I'm a little worried about the weight. To be honest with you guys, the, the weight and the workload, I don't think he's gonna be able to sustain. But to be honest with you, I think we should, it's hard to say, but I think we should call somebody that's a little bit more agile for the job because. Um, we've, we've had three or four now in a row. And when you get up to that age and your, your muscles lose a ten percent every year, you're, you're going at it and trying to work at the rate they're working at, there is tough.
Yeah.
Not that you could get the one in ten guys, it's kind of, you know, have no problem with it, it's a tough situation. So I think I wanna review all these things with him, but at the same token, I think it's time to, uh, we did interview um. One other guy called another guy.
Are we gonna at least invite the chairman back to come to work?
I don't think so. I don't think that he's gonna be able to hold up to the weight. If he don't hold up the first three days, you're not gonna hold up any better afterwards for those heavy stuff, it's not gonna get any better when it's ninety degrees out. That's just my own thoughts.
Yeah, right.
You know?
I mean, I, I, that's why I asked him if this stuff was addressed.
Right.
Does he think that there's an issue with him working going forward and, he didn't seem to think so, but.
He didn't think so, but the weight was an issue and we do have them lift seventy pounds at their physical to make sure that they can at least do that.
Okay.
But moving seventy pounds or carrying across the parking lot is another story too, you know, so.
I mean, I'd be fine if you wanted to pursue some other interviewees.
We did have some other, other good ones, so.
Other candidates.
Um, we use the closeness of his location and his ability to work every day available and every Saturday as one of our. Judgments.
Yeah.
And uh. My thought is, even if you're staying out, you should call and say, hey, I am staying out this.
It's cause call courtesy, it's call courtesy, yeah.
Cause Woody didn't honestly know why he was out, he didn't know if he was ill or something happened, and he asked me to reach out and call him, so I was going to. Alright, so we'll put that one off, um.
Okay.
I'm gonna open it up for the last public comment.
Made it just in time.
You made it just in time, we're already closing.
For the.
Mike, there goes your seventy.
I do, I do have an item to talk about.
You can go first.
Well, no, he's at the end with the selectmen's.
Oh, okay, I just wanted two items, I wanted to give you an update, update, we're working on the Kelsey Road turnaround as we speak. It's going very smoothly, all parties involved are, everybody's getting along famously.
Great.
Cooperating, working out pretty good, doesn't seem to be any issue, the only one thing that has come up that. May have to, would like to maybe do something with, but it's still up in the air. They, try to explain it so it all makes sense and that would take forever, but, they started one of the house sites. And Pat Guiney, who's Mike's brother, is the contractor, he's building two houses out there, one for his own son and one for his nephew. And the one for his nephew is basically, the access is off the turnaround. Well, they had gone up the class six road, which we never recognized as a class six road, but it showed up on the plan through Ed Rogers survey and all that.
Correct, yeah.
So it's kind of followed along, I don't know technically if it is a class six road or not, the town never had it. Did any layout or did anything with it, he just put it on a plan and it's been recorded and everybody's been charging ahead and saying this is a class six road. I don't know, it got a lot of scrutiny back in the uh day through our surveyor, his surveyor. I think the attorneys got involved a little bit, as you know, it dragged out for years and years, it didn't have any bearing on the subdivision. So there was no reason that the, the planning board say, hey, this has gotta get straightened out before we go forward with it. Cause he, all his frontage was derived off all the class five roads. So anyway, there was a little question about whether he could go around that way on this road, which I'm gonna just label it the class six, cause that's the way everybody knows. So they kinda cut out and filled for driveway there, well then we told them we couldn't give them the driveway permit on the class six road. So he moved it to another location, very amicable about it, and did, well now we've got in there and actually made the turnaround, we had to make a pretty significant cut up there. And it's really kinda steepened the grade of. We had to make a pretty significant cut up there. And it's really kind of steepened the grade of his driveway. So we've kind of left it, that we're gonna wait and see how it all plays out when everything's graded off and cut and filled. And they might ask if they can go back to using the other entrance. And I got some stuff from Donna, I'll just, I don't know, I'm gonna try to read it to you. You guys are all smart enough to read it on your own. And it, it just is a. I guess I'll give it to the chairman, go through the channels. It's the waiver thing that we get, we're allowed to do.
As your agent, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Building lot access and driveways, this must be for primary driveway.
No, that was in our planning and zoning ahead of them.
We request for off lot access driveways.
Yeah.
Shared driveways, easement driveways and alike, and so far that there can be no access from the approved lot frontage. Shall be considered an individual case by case basis. Support considerations shall be given to each other building lot features and amenities. And demonstrate the remaining overall lot is substantially adequate for the intended purpose. And that lot frontage access is problematic due to legal and or engineering constraints. It is not the intention of this regulation to grant driveway waivers exemption for new subdivision lots that appear marginal or inferior. Now, they could just regrade the driveway down lower, right?
It may, it might be able to make it, but.
Anybody like to read that again?
I was talking with him today and about it, and again, where it's a work in progress. And I told him that you guys met tonight, cause I said, that could be a possibility.
When they did that original one Jeff off the class six road.
Yeah.
I thought it was a nice driveway.
Yes, very nice, it curved in a bit, wide, spacious.
And I had no issue with them leaving it there, but Donna said it had to come off this color.
But I guess technically it doesn't have to, we found out.
Well, if you use this waiver, but if you look at the waiver, it's for hardship, I think, like ledge and or.
Well, that's part of the problem, he's got wetland, he can't go anymore to the, to the left because there's a wetland issue.
But he could just go down and create.
Maybe he can, yeah, may, but I, it's gonna meet our new subdivision, our new driveway regulations, cause they obtained their permit after the new driveway regulation.
Cause when they changed that over to the new location, I said Donna, when Jeff makes a turnaround, it's gonna be cut down in the bank and make it level to the road.
So it changed the dynamics a little bit.
And and Ed Rogers is the one that drew that turnaround, I think you even brought it up, say, hey, that way down.
Yeah.
At the level of the playground.
I just wanted to make you aware of it. I'm not asking for your blessings right here.
Yeah.
But I just, it may come up in discussion. It seems like everyone's being reasonable here.
Oh, yeah, definitely. It's a single driveway, I don't think it hurts either way, but I think the, I think the original way that driveway.
Yeah, we were, Pat and I were talking about that, that you went by a couple of times to Saurus and, and of course, he's gotta go back to the customer and talk to them. He said, I already told him, you gotta move it, you know, that whole thing, so. We left it that I'm gonna finish doing, I gotta do it and see how it comes out. But we may be back or he may be back to ask for that waiver, perhaps.
Can I just ask a question? Does this mean that that person would go through the turnaround to access this driveway?
They, uh, they are anyway.
They are.
Yeah, that's part of the, they go through the turnaround area.
So the only problem then is, and and this is uh. Cause you're allowing a driveway off a class six section of road, and typically you'd have to upgrade that to a class five section.
Well, I think they're all over the place with that. I mean, they would have the understanding that the town's not maintaining it or anything. And it's not a significant, it's not, it didn't derive any subdivision frontage, all the subdivision frontage was achieved on a.
I do understand that.
It is classified frontage.
Yeah.
Would there be a uh, stop of town maintenance though? On the, on the section going into this waiver driveway, if that was the case?
And I think the waiver part, if you put a dimension on it, maybe fifty feet maximum. We would stop our plowing services at the turnaround.
Okay.
At the edge of the turnaround, I should say.
So they would, they would just have.
We don't have any right to use town resources on any other part of the work of this class.
The thing is, if they were amenable, I mean.
You're gonna see how it works out.
Yes.
I think we have flexibility here to support this.
How much does it extend their plowing of their driveway if they had to come to the class five section?
Ah, probably a third more anyway, wouldn't you think Dave? Cause it goes in the loops around, but it's.
Yeah, so it's shorter to go the way they are now.
Yeah.
Just the way they did the driveway, they cleared out some of the bank and, but Jeff's gonna be down three or few, three or four feet lower. So they would have to dig that whole driveway down.
And it's gonna be a steeper grade for them to match it.
Unless they dug the whole thing.
A, a conforming driveway, yeah, no, I guess. So if it was in the nicer location.
Which is a level.
How, how much further would they have to plow their driveway?
Say maybe a third. Let's say, let's say the thing's two hundred feet, they might have to plow another seventy-five quarter.
So.
It, it's incidental, it doesn't.
Fairly trivial.
Yeah, it won't put it over like five hundred feet or six hundred feet.
The only thing is, let's think about this, if we allow some, we put a driveway.
Yeah.
On a class six road. Everything Mike and I've just been talking about tonight, we've never allowed that before, because then.
Well, it's done, it's been done. Millbrook.
Mine Hill.
Mine Hill. But it, these are all a period of time ago.
Right.
Mill, Millbrook.
Just we turned away three people's latch here, then wanted to put a driveway on a class six section of road.
But that, some of that included a subdivision. They were using the frontage for a subdivision. Like the one down here, the gal down here, that was a subdivision. In the subdivision decree, I'm gonna call it for lack of any other term. They were to upgrade the road. And then the specifications were very loose, as you guys know, it was before you were involved.
Yeah.
So we crafted a guideline thing to address that.
Subdivision over here, they were upgrading the road too.
Which one?
Don't got anyone.
Any road?
Yes.
But they're not using a class road for frontage or?
I know, but I just wanna be careful we don't put ourselves down a rabbit hole by allowing.
They're already down a rabbit.
Or precedent for.
Because we're, we're setting a precedent, a current one.
Yeah.
Which we haven't done.
Yeah.
I like that driveway better in that other location as well.
It's more feasible.
Well, they had a hump of land there, which had the two houses.
There's a tree that's blocked there that is ledge underneath it. So I, ledge is a bit of a concern. I mean, I told him I'd come ask.
This is my thought Jeff, if they dig down and they had a ledge, that would be obviously, you would have a.
Hardship.
A hardship.
Yeah, no. Like I said, it's a work in progress, and I just thought, he asked me if I could find out. And I said, yeah, I can. I could be here next week asking the question, or might not even be asking the question next week. But I wanted to take advantage of the fact we, plus report what we're doing down there.
Yeah.
So, just.
And there's one other thing they could do.
What?
Is ask for discontinuance to that road, then they could put the driveway anywhere they wanted.
Yeah.
Did Jeff do that at town meeting?
Yes.
But say ask for discontinuance.
There's one thing with this, this road, it never showed up on our records or anything, right? This, his, his surveyor.
It's almost like they're going on their own land anyway.
Pleaded, yeah, pleaded a case. It didn't go before a judge, it didn't go before anyone, the town didn't lay it out, we didn't.
In fact, you guys asked them to take it off the plan, the surveyor said. I know there's a road somewhere here, and this is the best case I deem it to be, so I can't take it off the plan. Cause the planning didn't ask them to.
Then I was not a hundred percent in favor moving forward to have it recorded as a legal document, but it didn't get enough traction. And everybody was just like, whatever. So we don't even know if it really, it doesn't exist in any of our records as well. The only history we have, I believe, was back in late seventeen, eighteen hundreds, is a bridle path. Whatever a bridle path is, I, you know, technically for a road. And there's, we got a book in there. I think you probably still got the documents, I bet it's this thick, was stuff referring to all this.
Two of them.
Yeah, I mean, there's, Dave's got his own too, cause he was involved in a lot of it. So anyway, this is where we're at, and I just thought I'd come in.
I, I said we just keep an open mind as we move forward.
I think that's all I'm asking at this point.
And I think come, come with the hardship to do it too, you know?
Yeah, if there's legs here, I mean, to me, that's a hardship enough to make it, make go the other route.
Cause the other driveway was much more aesthetically pleasing, I think for, even for their lots, there was a nice hill between the two homes. It gave better coverage, when they dug that tunnel, now you're like looking right at the side of the house, but.
Whatever. But they were very amicable when we even brought that whole thing up.
You know, that's half the battle.
Gotta do what we gotta do.
That's half the battle of dealing with people, I mean, you gotta be able to talk things.
Yeah, and that's all with Pat Guiney, I talked to him today, and we're just trying to, I'm trying to work something out, so we don't. He's got a customer that's building a house in the process of it. If their turnaround had been all done completely. And they bought a lot, they would have had to do what they had to do, but this kinda, the way it happened between the delay in starting it. And the delay me getting down there and do the town's part of it, where, where, where we are today.
Yeah, I have no issue with it, other than I don't wanna put us down a rabbit hole on other roads around town.
But as you do say, there's a point that says a case by case basis.
It is.
And that came out of which document?
Uh, Donna got it out of the, uh.
Subdivision?
Well, sub- subdivision regulation type.
But the part I'm getting to on here is, is, is not the intention of this regulation to grant driveway waiver exceptions for new subdivision lots. That appear marginal or inferior.
Well, it, it isn't marginal and inferior.
Right, the subdivision lot was.
If it was marginal and inferior, when it got subdivided.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know what you're saying Dave. The intent is if you're doing enough new subdivision, plan accordingly.
Right.
Plan ahead of time, which they did, they showed the driveway coming off the turnaround, but typically that was just a generic spot off of there.
Did you want to keep this copy Jeff, or do you want to put it in the record?
Whatever you'd like to do with it.
Do we?
I, I'd like to get, at least get a copy today.
We didn't have that. If I didn't, I don't wanna give to Donna, whatever. She highlighted it and she dug that up for me today, cause I asked her if we had anything on that. Cause I know there's been a lot of talk with us.
It's very easy to see if you've been out there, just turnarounds here and their driveway is now up here.
I was just gonna say, if this comes back before us, I would actually wanna field trip out to see it before I would ever.
Yeah.
Render any opinion or decision.
Sure, we could arrange that. And you know, it might not even come to that, it might be.
Right. But just know if it does.
Well, at least you have some options now, we can back out, say, yeah, they didn't have a real hard thing about it, but.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I think if we can put a hardship on it, then you have something, this is the reason.
Understood. Alright, well, that's all I got. That's all I need.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks for.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for getting us back eight o'clock.
Well, I wanted, I didn't want you to go home too early.
Bring it back up to public, Fred.
Yeah. Uh, I wanna give kudos to the sixth graders. There's two classes, my wife and I met over in the cemetery, May seventh. There was forty kids, and as a community service, they were putting the flags out for the veterans. So under the guidance of my wife and I and these, their teachers, they put out a hundred forty-four flags just in the center cemetery. And they're also coming back on June twelfth, under the guidance of the cemetery trustees, and they're gonna be cleaning some headstones that they can't read anymore. So they're doing that for community service.
Excellent.
Can I add to that? Um, I'd like to give kudos to the veterans that um, annually go out there and assist and guide. People to put those flags up. I got a call on Tuesday from a very emotional elder man.
Yeah.
Out of state somewhere, wanting to make sure that his brother's um, stone had a flag. Gave me his name, and I was able to research it through the find the grave, through um, the cemetery.
Yeah.
Uh, connection. And I recognized the lilac bush or something behind, but they had this beautiful picture of his grave. And I went out there and there was a flag out there, so I called them back.
Was that one over the east or over here?
It was, it's Luduk is the name over that way, in the back. And when I called them back, he was, he was all choked up and very emotional, but he was very grateful. And said, thank you, tell the veterans, thank you for their service and what they've done.
The hard part of the cemetery is there's no straight rows. You know, there's no straight rows, they're all zigzagged in there, you know, you try to line them up, but.
I thought, I thought about that, cause the picture is really.
In case you wanna know, we have two hundred twenty veterans in this town that we put flags up for. That's my wife and I do that.
Yeah.
So, it grows every year.
Bringing back to the, do you have anything for us?
In case the board hasn't heard from any of the residents in town, I mean, they've received their tax bill this week. And they also received the letters of the assessments for their properties that are uh, preliminary numbers through the revale. I do want.
I gave Julie coffee money.
I do wanna point out that um. This revale has brought our assessment from a sixty-seven percent up to a ninety-nine percent. The increase in the new values are gonna be well over three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred million dollars. And therefore, the tax decrease when we set the new tax rate will be substantial, and I don't think people are gonna be as shocked. As they appear in trying to get them to understand.
Did you say it was at sixty-seven? I thought it was fifty-seven.
Did I say six, fifty-seven?
I think it was fifty-seven.
Maybe what I'm thinking of is the.
I wanna interject here. A tax rate decrease, your taxes, you're paying the same amount or more.
Yes.
The league law.
Yes, will go up slightly, but the, people are getting a little nervous about the current tax rate to the new assessment.
You know, you know, I will say what's hard about this is they're asking you to come in if you have concerns, okay, with the valuation, right? But without knowing, not, without knowing the new tax rate, because it's gonna decrease so much, the tax rate. People have a hard time knowing if they should come in for, to meet with the assessors. Because they don't know if their taxes, let's say they're ten thousand a year, if they're gonna stay at ten or go to ten five, or they're gonna be twelve five. Cause if they went up by two thousand dollars a year, maybe they would wanna come in. But not knowing what their payment will be is gonna be huge. I've already got four calls about it.
I've probably gotten about twenty calls in Stuppence daily since Tuesday. But there, the, most of the people.
I guess it's just a phase we're gonna have to go through.
But the taxes will go up. I carefully out, uh, outlined the current tax rate with the term, current assessment. And then the uh, new uh, values with the projected um, tax effort. Because we had close to a million dollars in increases between the town's budget and the school budget. That is gonna cause an increase on everybody's budget.
Yeah.
That you can't ignore, but if, if my calculations are correct, the tax rate will still drop almost ten dollars, so.
And one of them, one of those was a one-time, one-year thing by that land up there, which was like a thirty-nine, thirty-nine cents.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's only for one year.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, go ahead.
I, I do think people should try to understand it. I know it's frustrating. And it is a little bit frustrating to talk with assessors, because I did sit down when we built the new house, so I could see how they derive that number. And it's, it's kind of a gray area. I got, we, we generate a computer model, plug it in and it comes back. So they don't really sit down, and if you read that letter to sit around, it's market analysis. If you got gold hardwood in your floor at your house and I got regular hardwood, they don't care, they're gonna pay your market thing. But it used to be years ago, it was based on what you had in your property, square footage and all that. It's kinda morphed into this whatever the, the market. But I think it's good for people to understand what they're paying, and make sure there's no discrepancies, like they're paying for something that they actually don't have. It was just an honest mistake of a, a structure, or yeah, because we get this tax rate set. And like Lynn says, theoretically, of all the numbers, it should go down substantially. So the taxes, unless we choose to spend more money, won't go up. But you don't wanna start out with an increased assessment, cause every time you go up that, your taxes are only gonna go up a couple cents a thousand.
You know what I follow this assessment, they're sending out the new assessed value of property.
Yes.
But your tax cards aren't included there, so you don't know whether.
Yeah, no, you don't know.
You don't know whether it's on the land or the basement, or your upstairs, or your unfinished porch.
That new assessment, they could come in and get the old assessment, they can look at it on our mapping.
Cause now you guys got a bunch of people running, they ask you for your tax card.
And see, yes, there's no changes to the um, you know, the assessment categories, like you said, the qualities.
Kinda under, I think if people have the ability to understand what they're paying, right now, it's pretty gray area. You get this, and timed and everything, I don't know if it had to be that.
So I'm looking at.
You get your tax bill, two days later, you get this thing, you look at your valuation, went for four hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, and you're like, oh my god. And then, you know, like you start doing the math, so.
But then you've got your work to do on respond by June third.
Yes.
These need to be solved by June thirteenth, so you have very little time.
Yeah.
To think about this, and if you're working, to come in, get a copy of your tax cards, your new one now. And look at that, schedule appointment to meet the assessor. Cause I will tell you, if you don't meet with them in the beginning, they're gonna meet with them later.
Well, the thing is, I, I felt the value initially excessively high. I looked at Zillow, Zillow uh, six months ago. And then I, I just decided I'm gonna pull Zillow today, and they were within a couple thousand dollars of Zillow.
I don't doubt the numbers. I don't doubt the numbers are.
Yeah, but the thing is, but I have two other companies uh estimates that I'm only thirty thousand dollars over, over, I I feel overvalued.
Yeah.
And so I'm challenging it.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to understand.
Yeah.
And and not just take everything for face value, but it's unfortunate, but.
Right.
We gotta do it.
Don't forget your view tax.
View tax, okay, yeah, alright. But it's been cloudy, do I get a rebate?
Yeah.
But yes, it is, um, I think without that secondary card, we're gonna continue with questions. We do not set our tax rate just for the viewers until October. So, from now until October, till we get our new tax rate out, and people can do the maths accurately. Cause we can't tell them a hard number now, because rooms and meals taxes, a lot of different things we don't know.
Working with the company doing the revo MRI, to get them to put the new preliminary tax cards. On our map, on our website, so that people can go in and look at it, cause that's what I've been doing all year.
So they're not even up.
You, no.
So if you come in for a new task card, are they available?
They have to see me, I have to log into the rebound, and then I have to remember to log out, because I don't wanna be looking at something. Unless I'm in the live database, and the live database is the old assessment.
And we're paying these guys for service, right?
Well, just, I find it hard that we're telling people it's gotta be done by the thirteenth, if their tax cards are not even available to the public yet.
Yeah, today's, tomorrow's Friday.
I definitely learned by this, I will make sure that the next rebound, if I'm around. Includes a printout of the tax card to go with that paper card.
But you know, quite frankly, it's not your job, they should have done it as part of their job.
Yeah, it, I don't know.
But the other side of the coin is, you know, to tell them, it's all part of that education thing.
Cause when you.
It's unfortunate.
When you come in to me with a, you don't have to justify your means, why you think they're wrong. Without that card, you can't justify, say your land went up, or they made your basement finished and it wasn't finished, or something to that effect.
You don't know where to, where to attack, where to defend, so.
I don't know.
Did they, they give you like a timeframe when they would have that stuff available, or don't you really know?
For the tax cards?
Yeah.
Um, I'm requesting it, so they will make them available.
Oh, they wouldn't unless you request it.
Right.
So you have to call for an appointment by June third.
Yeah.
But um, in their defense, when they met with the board of assessors last week, I attended that meeting. And they said, um, they, one of the, Brian Clark asked if we will have to do a full-blown. Rebound in thirty thirty, cause the DRA is saying, you have to do this, we just highly recommend this. And they basically said that there's no law on the books that says that a town has a. A full-blown rebound, because they're looking at that capital improvement deposit, and whether they need to increase that. Um, he asked them how much that would cost, he says it's pretty much three times what you're paying for a statistical. So if our statistical for that portion of it, not utilities, is about forty-five thousand dollars, we can expect it to be three times. For a full-blown, cause then you have to print the cards, knock on everybody's door, and.
Which we did budget for that.
Not full.
And the capital approval we did.
And the, yes, yes, we have, but we have to.
They did like a one-fifth of it.
We did one-fifth.
So what's the process they use now?
So what they're saying is that because there, there's a town in state of New Hampshire, or a couple of them that have challenged the DRA. That said, there's no laws on the books that say that we have to have a full rebound, which is a burden to the taxpayers, cause of cost. Um, what he also said is that based on the sales, and I've got a book of sales, that they used over a two-year period. And they visited each one of those sales, they did found very few mistakes on what was in their current assessment. That they were using as their, for their calculations, which in here says that the uh sales they used. Were uh, number of sales was seventy-one sales, overall values was seventy-four, so they had a good number. Sometimes only have five sales in their town, and it makes it difficult for them to apply um a formula. To everyone else's values, if they don't have anything to care to. So um, we had a few good things going for us, no errors, very few errors, that would warrant the DRA to mandate the a rebound. So.
The other thing to keep in mind is just the relative um change of you versus other similar properties that you have in town, right? And your data here showed that the average value is increased eighty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if you look at, if you do your calculation of your new value divided by your old value.
See if that.
If you're, yeah, if you're less than one point eight, that means you're less than. The town, the town average.
Okay, because on this, the breakout of this very large report that I have, it does give each particular lot. A percentage of their change.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
On what, where did you see that?
It's not on the one that's on the website, but I.
People can't access it.
I know, I got the, I just noticed it today, it's like a wave, we have to.
Where did you see it though? Not in the forms that went out to the people?
No, they're not, it's on this, this old new report that they provided as a preliminary to the board of assessors.
Oh.
But they didn't provide that to the homeowners?
Not the, not the complete one, just like this, this eighty percent number is not.
Anywhere.
Not published anywhere.
It's not on that letter?
So you take the new value divided by the old value, or the old value divided by the new value?
No, it's new divided by old, and that would be one point eight, if it's eighty percent more.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll have to go home.
Yep, new divided by old equals one point eight, that's, cause that's what I did for the total town.
Did you try yours?
Yes, I'm not gonna tell you.
Didn't work, did it?
No, no, it did.
We taxed it one down.
I made like seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
We gotta bring, we gotta bring that up.
Yeah, we're.
But I have no idea, like, why am I lower than the average? I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know. It could be that they don't value certain things, you know, the same, because of the statistical analysis. So it could be something about my property that's.
Yeah.
Lower than the average around, maybe, cause I have such. I've, I have such a steep driveway.
That's what it is.
So I got lower.
Well, I mean, the other thing.
The other thing that's.
But then I have you.
Throws a little monkey in the, wrenching the monkey here, whatever you wanna call it. You hear so many stories about somebody's asking five hundred thousand for their house, and they bid it up to six hundred. To me, that's an inflated value, just because you're willing to pay six hundred for a five hundred thou, a house that. Real estate appraisal. Market people said is only worth five, and you paid six, that kinda.
The inventory not there.
Quick, quick, quick drive value, it's what people are willing to buy it, yeah.
Yeah.
I do it to create a bidding war, but I think the values, you know, if they go through a conve- con correction, we're gonna have to have an evaluation. Done that again.
Yeah.
Pricing correction. But it's one way or the other, either the tax rate's low. Our tax rate has been artificially high-looking for ten years, if you look at your board. Because it's been in the mid to high twenties. Just like Goffstown and all these other towns are, and our tax rate before that was in this, you know, was much lower than that, it was ten percent.
When I started in two thousand and three, there were a few years in a row that we were at a hundred and three and a hundred and seven percent, so. You know.
So that was.
Yeah, their tax rate was fifteen and sixteen.
Our values were set in a year that was uh having booming years for property transfers. And then all of a sudden, the market drops, and you can't sell your properties, you're over.
Valuated, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and those are the ones that had problems with refinancing.
Tax rate just goes down.
Of, yeah, of the two folks that have asked me questions about it, I say, I use the example of if um. If the values doubled, your tax rate would be half. Because the town is, has to legally obligated to only spend what they were approved for budget at town meeting. They don't suddenly get the ability to spend more money.
That's my biggest.
All it is, all it's doing is redistributing the tax dollars among all the properties in town, to make sure everything's kind of on par with each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, there's still, the amount of taxes that the town collects is identical.
Yep.
If there's no budget increase in March.
That's for this year.
Correct, and and that's outside of town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
The, whatever was approved at town meeting, you cannot, the town can't take, spend more money than what was approved at town meeting.
And that guarantee is this year. Now, if we go to town meeting next year, and everybody says, let's buy this, let's buy that, that will affect it again.
Oh, totally.
Yeah, but this year, yes.
Yeah.
That, that will.
Hundred percent true.
Absolutely, yeah.
For sure. Okay, Fred, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Um, we took Lean already, bring you back to the slide board.
Okay, I um, I attended, for the, it sounds like for the first time in a little while, um, the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning. Commission has a technical advisory committee, and I attended that last Friday along with Chief Remillard. And there, just to give an overview of what goes on at this, uh, again, I don't know the last time anyone from Dunbarton attended this. Uh, but there are forty towns within the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. Uh, of which Dunbarton is one of them, and what they do is they do various reports about transportation and options. You'd be interested, Jeff, in terms of the, like, the roads. Uh, so we, we got presented with like a coordinated transportation plan that talks about various transportation options around. Things like buses or public transportation and things that exist in places like Concord. Um, we obviously don't have buses and things in places like Dunbarton or bus stops. Uh, but they, they do look at all of those options, and they do reports on town. Um, uh, census data on things like sixty-five and over um aged folks. Uh, households with no vehicles, no cars, the poverty level of different towns. They look at uh distance to medical facilities, cause that's considered an important um aspect to uh, to, for transportation needs. And they look at all that, and then they, what they do is they do a ranking of all towns that are in this forty towns, in terms of. Which towns need attention in terms of more transportation options. Dunbarton actually does pretty well on the list, they're actually in the, in the range of um. Like, low impact or low risk in terms of all central New Hampshire. Um, mainly because we have a fairly high percentage of households with cars. We're fairly close to hospitals here, with Concord being right nearby. Uh, the road access to get to those hospitals is good.
Do they take into consideration um apartment dwellings and rentals? Is that factored into that?
I don't, I don't think so, um, not that I knew of. You know, in terms of providing that, they they look at, they do look at households or uh folks without access to their own cars. Um, so a place like Hennecker with New England College, has a higher need for public transportation, because you have students. And students would typically not have vehicles, um, things like that. So that's, that's all part of their like transportation plan that they're always looking at, I guess. Uh, so that was, that was an interesting report. They also talked about something called TomTom Traffic Reports. This became very interesting for um Chief Remillard and I. Apparently, you can, they have data now available, where you can take any section of road in your town. And get access to information about speed, congestion, and where cars are coming from. And where they're going to, that are traveling, let's say, through your town. Um, so they brought up a couple of examples. This is all based on things like GPSs that are in fleet vehicles. It's based on people with their cell phones, as you drive around. Satellites are watching where you're driving, how fast you're going.
So it's true, they are listening.
It is true data.
Grab that data and sell it.
It, and all that data, it's, it's all anonymous, it's not tied to anything, but they can tell you that there was, let's say if you wanted um data on this road out here. You know, thirteen, and you can say between town office and, you know, up at the Page's Corner. I wanna know like the speed data, or the congestion, or where those cars are coming and going to. Uh, they can take any distance, you could even have something as short as like five hundred foot section of road. And so we have access to this as part of this central New Hampshire, and so I'm actually meeting with the chief. Um, uh, the week following next, and we're actually gonna just talk about like, are there areas in town that we would be interested in?
What do you say?
In anal analyzing. Now, I do know, uh, cause I live on Twist Hill Road, on a Friday afternoon. Ski season, foliage season, summer season.
And break in traffic.
Um, whenever ninety-three is backed up at all, um, Google and Apple Maps and everything will route people up Twist Hill. And coming that way, so you can see batches of five, six cars in a row, probably because of the traffic lights that are down in Manchester. Come through, uh, we could actually get data that shows that ninety-two percent of all vehicles are from out of state.
Mm-hmm.
Are, from where they're coming from on that road during this period of time, this will help. The chief is already, they're already over there on Friday afternoons, you've probably seen them, um, if you ever travel.
Mike Gorman was there every Friday.
Yes, yes. Um, so this is all interesting, we, I didn't realize, and the chief didn't realize that we had access to this information. We just have to send a request off to the folks at the planning commission, and we can get data on any part of town. Um, the other, the other thing that they did go through, the last thing I'll talk about, is this crash data analysis. So whenever there's an accident anywhere within these forty towns, that's all recorded in a database. So they can actually show high-density areas for accidents, I'm sure Page's Corner was on that list.
Mm-hmm.
And it, what it does is it tells the region that something should be done traffic-wise to mitigate. Either just the accidents or even fatalities. I noticed that in, they had a five-year period, look back, there's been no fatalities in Dunbarton. In five years, on any of the roads, um, they typically will end up on an interstate, places like Bow and. Concord had fatalities because of ninety-three and eighty-nine, whatnot. So all that's available too, and so if the town wanted um the state data, and, I mean, I'm sure. I'm imagining the police department has this data themselves in terms of where the hotspots in town in terms of accidents are. But if they didn't, they could access it from this planning commission. So being a part of this group of um forty towns allows us access to data. Um, and I think our choice of having um the chief as being the primary person representing the town. Um, is very applicable, because a lot of this has to do with traffic and accidents and speed and congestion and things.
Help them.
And things like that, it definitely helps them target areas.
Yeah.
That they, they should be paying attention to. So that's my, that's my update on this. This meets quarterly, um, so the next, next meeting is uh in August.
I do know the town has been heavily involved with central regional planning for a lot of years.
Yeah, okay.
Ken Swayze used to be the planning board representative, and I'll do it on a regular basis.
Oh, okay.
For the meetings. Myself, we participate in the traffic count every year.
Okay.
They do a, a snapshot traffic count, the old cable across the road, you run.
Oh, sure.
We do that, alternating on all the roads throughout town, and every year they send us a report on them. Um, it's kind of amazing, because you say, oh, there's gonna be a lot more traffic, but a lot of times it doesn't vary that much. But again, it's just a snapshot, that's whatever number of days that thing is, if it's on a Friday, of course, it's gonna rock up. It's on a Tuesday, probably not as much.
Right.
But we do keep track of that every year, and they do that. Any of our planning changes, we've brought them in as consulting. Mike Todd has come quite a bit himself, a couple of his henchmen, one of them lives in Goffstown. And has worked with Donna directly on crafting some of the stuff we have, so. The town has participated with them, I mean, this is a whole new level.
Yeah.
I mean, cause we never messed around.
Having all this satellite data.
Yeah, nothing like that. When we did our master plan, they helped us craft that when we updated it a few years ago. They came out, spent a great deal of time with us and kinda guided us, you know, that whole thing you talk about transportation and. Aging population and what to allow for that, and, and again, you hit the nail on the head. We are always kinda in that gray area, where we don't have enough population or enough people to. Really make a difference, but we take it all into consideration, and it has been very helpful with the master plan. You can attest to that, that we spend some time.
And they helped us with Page's Corner, putting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you got that on the ten-year plan?
And it's still on the ten-year plan, but even the stop signs have significantly reduced the accident rates.
Going through that intersection now.
So it's a worthwhile thing, but I had no idea about this, it's the first time I've heard of this, it's a whole new level.
Yeah, yeah, it was quite, we, we were, uh, it was quite, quite an eye-opener for everybody who was there, that they actually have access to this data now.
Yeah, like I said, we were just a little school.
Yeah.
Cable across the road.
And and even, um, I talked to the chief about, you know, he has the speed signs that he can put out. Um, but those are at individual points on a road, right, you can get the speed right here.
Yeah.
Where this data can tell you the spee- can tell you the speed over a two-mile section of, of road. Or a three-mile section of road, or a five-hundred-foot section of road.
Wow. It's a lot of information.
And uh, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting. Dave, that's my uh, report, Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna go to Mike next.
I just wanna, there was an email sent out from the police chief, I recognize Sergeant Tyler for his work on a sexual crimes case. We had one of our residents who was incarcerated, and he may have been guilty. But the thing is, Sergeant Tyler worked diligently to make sure justice was served. Some clues to Sergeant Tyler. Briefly. And then I have it on public when we're done.
Um. Thing we might add is, we are all gonna get several calls of people about these newest. Thing I might add is, we are all gonna get several calls of people about these new assessments. I think, uh, to try and keep people as calm as possible about it, I think would be good for the board. And let them know our tax rate setting is gonna be in October, it's definitely gonna go down, we don't know how much it's gonna go down. I don't think we wanna start putting a hard figure out there at all, um.
We'll pick up to our brother.
And, uh, you know, just answer it the best we can with some of the knowledge that we have, that, uh. You know, even though the values are going up, the tax rate's gonna come down, it should balance out fairly well, and, uh. I think that when those cards are ready, people should take a look at them, if they have a chance.
Definitely. Cause that, cause if you do come for, uh, an interview or a meeting with them, you have to have something that you're, you can't just say, I feel like it's too high.
We gotta show some facts.
You'll, yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll in the meeting right there.
Um, I did actually interview one of these people, but I'd like to interview these two more people that we have from the transfer station. And get a consensus from the board that we can go ahead and get one of these guys on board.
I'll remember that.
Make sure we're covered for our vacation time.
Yeah.
In June. Um, okay, that consensus is good from the board, make sure that's in the meeting minutes, so, go ahead. Um, Fred, we're gonna clean up now, we're gonna, um, adjourn these and go to a. Over and off to the bike for access.
Yeah, for R S A ninety-one dash alpha, paragraph three, sub-paragraph, row number two, paragraph C, at my request. Come in, yes.
Null chess?
La voie, yes.
What Mike was asking for.
Okay.
These are the only things that we can go.
Yeah, yeah. We're adjourned for two minutes, give Fred.